Planning and zoning commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city will hold, yeah, the city council will hold a public hearing and make final decisions on all matters before the commission other than site plans and preliminary subdivision plans. The commission's decision to approve or deny a subdivision, a preliminary subdivision plat or a site plan is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to city council. You'll need to contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on those council hearings. This evening, the applicant will be given 10 minutes to present their request. Preponents and then opponents are allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicants will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal, and that's after presentation by staff. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed. We don't have any, but I suspect we have some coming on. And will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you, when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-2834209 should special accommodations be required. Assistive listening devices are also available for the meetings in the council chambers. Planning and zoning commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7 for customers with that service. The broadcast is also streamed in real live time on the City of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. You need to click the watch live links for those meetings. Kathy, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Quorum being present. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any changes or additions?
I contacted Kathy earlier in the week with a couple of changes, and those were made. Thank you.
I recall that. That's correct. So, subject to the corrections, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. One abstention.
Chris. Yes.
Okay. Do we have some consent items we want to move on?
Um, four.
All right.
And, um, I-
Two.
And two?
Two.
Now, um, four, I had occasion to speak with, um-
You need to turn your mic on, Kathy. We're going to get in trouble.
We're not on the air.
Kind of a low talker anyway.
I know we are, but Kathy always gets mad at us when we don't turn the mic off.
I had occasion to speak with the applicant from Ruon, Mr. Carfre, and, um, the, um, I think there was, there was maybe some, some confusion about what they had intended to do, and it's my understanding, and the applicant has agreed that this is a temporary solution for, for Ruon, and they're intending to be someplace else. They don't intend to operate a car lot on the site. It's a building that they already own. They're just moving a couple of offices there for now, and so they, they would agree to all of the staff recommendations plus one that says they've got 18 months to complete the site plan, which should give them plenty of time to get, um, their, their other plans for a dealership someplace else in town together. So, um, I think, uh, they're agreeable to that, and, and if we all are, then-
Mr. Carfre, are you present?
Yes.
You want to come forward?
Absolutely.
We just need to make sure that you're, you're in agreement with what Ted just indicated.
Yes, I am in agreement.
All right. And Mike, did you have something you want to indicate on with respect to that?
No, just, I think, uh, the 18-month compliance period. We'd issue a temporary CO for the property, and then at the end of the 18 months, if they don't comply with the, um, full site plan requirements, then they have to cease the use.
Made agreement?
Okay, great.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
So, we're moving four. Are we also moving two on? Is that my understanding? Okay.
Just on item number two, just to clarify, you saw in the staff rec that the urban design review board, it was subject to their comments. They have not finalized their review of the project yet, so, uh, prior to council action to either approve the vacations or prior to the conveyance of the property, um, those, those conditions would need to be addressed, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for just an information, not, not to, you know, not pejorative to the, to the request. Except for the skywalks, are there other issues or incidents in Des Moines when air rights are involved? I ask because it's rather an unusual concept, at least in this town.
We've had, uh, excuse me, some air rights. Probably some of the first ones that were vacated historically was the Capitol Square and the Hub Tower, uh, many years ago. But we've had a few recently that have been like balcony projections over the right-of-way. Uh, one just recently over on East Locust Street. So, I would guess it's most commonly the balcony projections, air rights.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion?
Is that clear, Brady?
Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor of moving two and four to consent, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. Okay, now I'm going to, do we have a motion to move the consent agenda?
I move the consent.
Okay. Get it? Christine? Okay. All those in favor of consent, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Okay, carries. Jason, I need to talk to you or I want to talk to Mike about item number three.
Yes, Chairman, members of the commission, Jason Van Assam, the planning staff. Item three, the applicant has requested a continuance to the December 19th meeting to give them an opportunity to evaluate the impacts of the staff recommendation and meet with us, so we're recommending approval of that request to bring it back to you on the 19th.
Is the applicant present?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to move it, continue it to the 19th? Greg? Got it?
December.
19th of December. Okay, that's okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation again, Kathy. Okay, that all out of the way, we're going to go ahead and take up item number one, which is a request from the Lee Family Properties, represented by Andy Lee, for review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines in NPC districts, a property located at 3701 Ingersoll Avenue to allow revision to off-street parking configuration and landscaping. Jason, you presenting on this one?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
This item was continued, um, to allow the applicant some time to review the staff recommendation, also allow for a neighborhood meeting to happen that occurred last week. Staff, Mike Ludwig, was there on behalf of staff as well as representatives of the neighborhood organization, and some of those folks are here tonight, and the applicant, and reviewed the applicant's proposal and the staff recommendation, and had some discussion, and with Mike being the one that was there. When it, when it's appropriate, I'll let him kind of talk through that, that meeting, at least from his, you know, what he observed. Just to refresh everybody's memory, this is a photograph of the site from Ingersoll Avenue looking towards the north and the west, the intersection of 37th Street. And then looking, um, back down along Ingersoll, back towards the east, uh, the site, um, there's four buildings with a total of, um, actually, it's three buildings with four tenant spaces, I apologize, but aerial showing the subject site. There is some parking in the front, front of the building that was originally a gas station, and then the majority of the parking that exists is at the rear of the site. I can kind of see some of the commercial uses along Ingersoll with the single-family residents to the north. Response map. This letter was, um, we provided this at the last meeting, but we did have some communication from the North of Grand Neighborhood, and they're here tonight, so I'll let them represent their position.
Jason, has that been reviewed or received and filed?
I believe it's your last meeting, and it was made part of the file.
All right, thank you.
So, this is the site plan as submitted, and in working with the applicant's consultant over the last couple of weeks, I, they do have some revisions that they'd like to show you with regard to what it is there, what they would like to do. It's somewhere in between what this is and the staff rec. I'll let them explain that. But just generally speaking, you can see the, kind of maintaining the existing condition in the front, landscaping along 37th Street, some striping and identification of stalls in the back with some, about four feet of landscape buffer on their property, on this site, and then the remaining six feet via an easement on the property to the north, which the applicant owns. It has a house on, it's a rental property. Just some more details, garbage, trash enclosure in this area in the alley, so those just architectural details, building elevation details. At the last meeting, you saw this sketch. Hopefully, it was clearer then. Here we go. Uh, they, that we prepared as staff as part of our recommendation for streetscape improvements, Ingersoll streetscape. Think what I'll go ahead and do now is just walk through the, the staff recommendation as far as the recommended conditions, and then we can go from there. So, our typical comment of compliance with the administrative review process. Condition number two is regard to that 10-foot buffer to the north. We believe that there's adequate space on the site to provide that onsite. There is typically a two-way drive aisle, only needs to be 24 feet in width. What they're showing in this area is actually 30 feet, so you could reduce that by six, and that makes up the six feet up here. Obviously, you wouldn't, um, over in this area, once you get to the trash enclosure, you know, this could be brought down a little bit to provide that, but along the parking, we are recommending that buffer be provided onsite as there is adequate space to do so. Provision of a minimum five-foot wide pavement setback from Ingersoll Avenue within an ornamental metal fence in that area to be landscaped. You can see that in this sketch. See that this is representing the five-foot pavement or that setback that this area, the pavement being removed and landscaped. Condition four is the provision of Ingersoll streetscape improvements, and I won't read this, but basically, we didn't, uh, we wanted to, um, wanted to make sure, this is a quick sketch, it doesn't have all the details in it. We wanted to make sure that that was written down, and we've gone over the, this verbatim with, with the applicant in the meeting, that's all the components that are a part of that. Item five is the removal of the base from the pole sign that shows, shows up here. Like, you know, that should be cleaned up, not utilized. And then, then item six, this is another cleanup, and I think this may be new information from the last time at the last P&amp;Z meeting, but these, this area through here is actually signed for no parking on this side of the street, so we need to make sure that that is not shown on the site plan. So, that's condition number six. And then, condition number seven is the provision of parking lot lighting and security cameras to discourage illicit activity. Parking lot lighting shall not exceed 20 feet in height, with pedestrian lighting being no more than 15 feet in height. And all pole and building-mounted fixtures should be down-directional, sharp-cutoff-type fixtures to keep glare from adjoining residential properties. So, that is the staff recommendation. As I mentioned, the applicant has revised drawing to share with you and kind of talk to you about what it is they would like to offer. Be happy to answer any questions you might have from staff.
Any questions? Thank you. The applicant, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hello.
I'm Tom Orman. Um, I prepared those other drawings that we're looking at. Can we focus? Do I have any control over this?
Yeah, I'm going to try and-
He's trying to focus it.
Oh, okay. This is kind of a cleaned up, uh, this is kind of a continuance of one we were talking The owner is going to improve the parkway along 37th. We added part of the Ingersoll planner motif over here. The owner would like to keep this diagonal parking in front of these two tenants. We get more parking this way. It's the way it's been for a long time, and its tenants are very concerned about losing parking in front of their businesses. As for the, what's going on back here for the easement, this is a very kind of strange-shaped parking area, and the owner's afraid that if we take six feet out of this area, while it will be 24-foot and legal, that it's just a little too tight because of the, the, we keep dropping off spaces, and you're kind of heading against the bias here. We did prepare a plan that would try diagonal parking, but then that would funnel everybody on this alley, and, and no one thought that was a very good, uh, solution to come down like this gravel alley over here, which is, I think, 15 feet wide. I guess, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Ted?
Yes, sir.
Um, Tom, tell me your last name again, please.
Orman.
Tom Orman. Mr. Orman, um, at the neighborhood meeting, which I happen to be at, um, I think Mr. Lee, maybe it's a question for Mr. Lee, I don't know if he's coming up here, but they, they indicated that, that they were okay with all of the staff recommendations here, and that they were going to be good with that here, and this is significantly different.
I don't think he quite understood what was going on along Loc, or Ingersoll.
Okay.
And he's never been in favor of moving the buffer down here, and it's, it's a, he sees it as a liability issue and a safety issue. A lot of these people that park back here drive rather large vehicles, like pickup trucks and vans, and 24-foot is, he just sees that as too confining.
The city standard, however.
And, well, yeah, admittedly, it is, and certainly, the, the trash is down here, and even if we do do the buffer, that, the trash will have to remain here. We'll need some special, uh, agreement to violate that, the buffer with the trash down here. I suggested putting it over here up against the building, and the tenants will not allow that. It started out by the building, and they had a real problem with, uh, vermin and insects and what have you. But the owner's just asking to allow the six-foot easement here in lieu of the 10-foot buffer on the side of the property line. Another argument against, uh, doing the complete Ingersoll streetscape in front of this building is it is an assembly building. It has a rather large, um, occupant load. If we could work out maybe a smaller system than what was shown on the sketch, I think that would be more. But certainly, the owner's asking that we keep the parking here, clean it up, and then have our, um, the six-foot easement onto his neighboring property.
Greg?
I have just a couple of questions for you. I was trying to understand the changes from last time when you were here, and so far, what I see is that-
There's really none.
Okay.
Just this corner. Well, this is a continuation of our last meeting.
Okay.
And we hadn't seen anything, staff had not, had not shared their plans for the, the Ingersoll corridor up to here, and, uh, so I started looking into that, and we added, we added it here, and I kind of cleaned it up a little bit, so it's a little more legible what's going on. And there were some other staff comments directly to us concerning some of the species of the, the trees and stuff, and some of their suggestions as to doing that, and that, those changes have been made. Not that it, that, that's kind of a minor nuts and bolts aspect of it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please, please come forward. Seeing none, all those in, opposed to the application, please come forward, and if we could, we've got several, we'd want you to line up on the wall here and come on up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you very much. Matt Cohen, 711 41st Street. I am a member of the North of Grand Neighborhood Association Board, also own a business across the street from this property. Unfortunately, tonight, we did come, um, to support the project. We had not seen what was going to be proposed here. So, we first and foremost would like to thank the individuals from the city staff, as well as Councilman, Councilperson Hensley, and about 15 area residents and business owners who chose to attend that meeting. We felt that it was a productive use of everyone's time, but judging by the proposal here today, there's some significant misses, and I'll just state the two that really rise to the top. The first is the buffer across the north side of the property. Those buffers exist for a reason. They provide transition between commercial and, and residential uses, as you all know, and we don't feel that in this scenario, that buffer will serve that, that purpose if it lies on the residential property. The second is the, the streetscaping. The angled parking there, which has been there for many years, results in a very, very narrow sidewalk, and there wasn't a significant loss of parking to, to put a, uh, parallel stalls all across the front, and we felt that the improvements made otherwise were significant to the project as well. So, those two areas were very important as well. And then the last piece is the, uh, we, we realize that there will be shared parking in the future. We want to make sure that as that comes online, we have an opportunity to, to see what's proposed, where that shared parking will exist, and the agreements that will be in place for that, so.
Christine?
So, the letter that we, we received from you really isn't taking this, this plan?
Correct. We had not seen this plan before tonight.
Okay, and I also understand from reading, reading the letter, that there's a history or at least a track record of not being in compliance with maybe some other-
That, that's correct. There's been a number of items related to, the shared parking agreements, for instance, were honored, which was a condition of the previous site plan. There's also been numerous just operational violations, for instance, trash removal and that sort of thing from the site that causes us concern as well.
Okay.
Not necessarily related to the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ted?
Uh, Matt, did you get the sense that, that they were going to come back with a plan like this, or did you think that from the meeting, the NOG meeting the other day, that, that they had indicated that they agreed with the staff recommendation and-
We felt we had full agreement when we left that meeting, that the staff recommendation and would be fully considered and-
Any other questions? Matt, I do have a question. As, you guys are supportive of the staff recommendation, is that right?
We are supportive of the staff recommendation, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? In opposition to the application? Seeing none? Need some rebuttal time? No? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Have a motion? Check, move staff? Any discussion? Greg?
Has one minor concession to what they were asking for, and as we would look at how the Ingersoll streetscape worked, I think it would make sense that we don't stick with that concept that staff had and do allow some wider space for a exit from the building by spacing the planters further apart. We've done that in other places along Ingersoll, and so, um, that I would give up, but the parking should go and so forth, so. Mike, do you understand that one? Jason?
Yeah.
You know, having it six feet wide, if it's eight or 10, is no big deal, and, and the two-foot increment.
Yep.
So, is that, is that a change in, in any way to the staff recommendation?
I, I don't think so. It's just a matter of how they interpret what that streetscape would look like, and so that's a matter of interpretation.
The condition was that the applicant would have to have their engineer design the streetscape, and through that process, we could look at those, those types of things.
Christine, just-
I did, just for my own understanding. So, the streetscape plan that's in place now, how far is that supposed to extend up Ingersoll? Is there a finite ending, or is, what is?
The, you're asking me, I assume. Um, the-
Well, since you're involved with it, it wouldn't hurt Ted.
The, it's essentially 42nd Street to 15th Street downtown, so it's the, uh, it doesn't, it goes through the intersection on 42nd Street, but not, not further than that in, in this current phase, so.
And it does kind of taper in the level of improvements as you get to the western end? It won't be the 28th, the 31st Street streetscape like is proposed in front of this building when you get up towards the residential end?
So, would it be reasonable for, to assume then, any, any change that's, that happened along this corridor going forward are consistent with that plan? Okay, thanks.
I was just going to show, in this area, you can kind of see that once you get past, you get about 38, this is really that transition area. So, this side clearly is within the heart of the more intense commercial part of Ingersoll.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, to make sure I understand, the on-street parking that's angled, that is going away with the streetscape, are you referring to the parking in the back? That's the shared parking that's supposed to make up for that, or is there other parking on this drawing that I'm not seeing?
The applicant also owns the Edco Credit Union property, which is across the alley to the, to the west.
Can you put that aerial up again to see where that is?
There's, um, the applicant owns this parcel, and then they own Edco over here, and then obviously, we've talked about the residents to the north, so they own, they have some options.
So, they have excess parking on the Edco property currently, and up till now, that's what's been discussed, is the additional parking they would have to have. They need to have a shared parking agreement approved by Sue Donovan, our zoning enforcement officer. I think the neighborhood is asked to review that when it comes, uh, when, when they submit that, and I think we can accommodate that. They also had asked for some lighting and security cameras in both lots to help monitor activity. We would pursue that also during our review. But at this point, it would just be an administrative review for that shared parking because the lot exists.
I have a little concern about these two businesses that appear to have only front entrances off of Ingersoll, so the parking would be behind. Do they have rear entrances at Manhattan Deli? Do they have a back? Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was access.
You haven't been to the Greenwood Lounge?
Sorry, no.
I can confirm, I can confirm the Manhattan Deli has-
No, but I do like to get a sandwich at-
Okay, moving along.
I do like to get a sandwich at the deli, and I would be concerned if their business would be affected by this and that customers could still access their business.
They do have an entrance.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Ted?
Maybe just a comment. I did speak with my kind that owns the Greenwood, and, and he didn't have a problem with the angled parking going away. I did not speak to the owner of the deli, but, um-
Okay. Anything else? Seeing nothing, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of staff's recommendation, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Your abstention? One abstention. Okay. Thank you.
Does that mean that Greg's suggestion would be handled administrative?
Yeah, that's going to be, right. Okay, um, that concludes our meeting. Director's report.
I've already spoken enough. Thank you.
All right. Save your voice.
Yes.
Greg, anything for Arno?
What?
All right. Anything else for the good of the group?
Tea.
Seeing none? We adjourn.[1784.23]